Good evening, everyone. We're going to call to order a meeting of the East Hampton School Committee. We're going to roll call in. Ben?
Ben Hershey here.
Eric?
Eric here.
Linda?
Linda's here.
Sam?
Sam here.
Laura Scott present.
I'm asking to be let in so I can share.
Yeah, just keep messing with me.
Sorry.
That's great.
Do you want to sit here?
Yeah. Great. Okay. Good evening, everybody, and welcome. We are going to begin tonight. We are missing Mayor LaChapelle and Meghan Hunter. We wish Meghan Hunter his sincere happy birthday wishes.
Meghan Harvey.
Meghan Harvey, what did I say? Meghan Hunter?
You've married Meghan again.
Listen, nothing but love on this committee. We're going to begin with correspondence. I believe we have three, and one is actually here tonight. We did receive two pieces of correspondence from Councilor Owen Zerrett sharing links about antisemitism education, about webinars to support our Jewish community in difficult political times. We also received an email from Sonia Oppenheim talking about some concerns about the East Hampton Public School music programs feeding up into the high schools, so problems that she's identified at the middle school level. We have heard several folks voice concerns about that. We are looking into it. And a lot of these things, which brings me to the third piece of correspondence, which was from Kira Henninger, discussing some concerns about one of the duties of the school council from their first meeting was to conduct a survey of parents and families. Here, express some concerns about the methods of that survey. And so those are issues that we are aware of. We plan to do more of a deep dive into those topics, likely beginning in January, partly because we have a lot going on in few meetings from now until the end of this year, and partly because those are issues where we would really like to take into account the feedback and the input from the new superintendent, who has yet to be named. The Superintendent Search Committee will begin their work officially tomorrow night. So that is it for correspondence, and I do not believe we have any gifts to report. So we are going to move to public comment. Anyone from the audience that East Hampton High School up or wait? We have a special time for you. But everyone else who would care to share, go ahead to the microphone, share your name and let us know your thoughts. Understand, we don't respond to you. We're not allowed in this moment, but we take your comments into consideration. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Sarah Woodard, 24 Sheldon Avenue, East Hampton. I am a teacher. I've been a teacher for 26 years. I'm also an aunt to two kids in the East Hampton Public Schools. I helped door knock and get this school started. I'm an advocate for education, and I have a part-time job with the MTA. I'm here on, yes, on question two, and I'm hoping, I know that you're not voting tonight, but it is really important to me as a teacher and as a person, this specific issue. Just to make you all aware, we're one of only nine states in the United States that continues to have a requirement for graduation based on one test. I feel that it is absolutely outrageous in 2024 that this is true. I'm a special education teacher and a reading specialist. I work with kids who struggle the most in life. I work with some very brilliant and gifted and talented students who will never pass this test. I work with ninth and 10th graders currently who can't pass the test, won't pass the test. And one test should not be a measure of someone's success or failure. There are many other ways that we can show accountability, and this just is not it. I'm hoping, you know, there's some opposition now to this question that's coming on TV. I've gotten some texts about vote no. It seems like a no-brainer to me. I think that most people agree. And as educators and members of East Hampton Public Schools, I hope that you will support this question and that you'll come out publicly and agree that this is not a great way to measure success. And I hope that we could, City Council voted yes to endorse this, and I'm hoping, as an East Hampton resident and educator and someone who deeply cares about this issue that has affected myself and many others that I know personally, that you guys will put your support towards this issue. Thank you.
So, not in response to that, but I want to let the public know who's watching. We did discuss this at our last meeting, two weeks ago, and because there are a couple of members that are here tonight that were not here last week, we will touch on this again when we get to school committee discussion. Okay, thank you. Anyone else care to share from the audience?
Owen Zerrett, 74 Florence Road, 20-plus-year resident of East Hampton, a parent, a city councillor, and a member of the Jewish community. I've sat at various Jewish organizations and boards, and I've administered Jewish Collective here in East Hampton for the past eight years. Seeing the worrisome rise in antisemitic incidences, over 10,000 reported since last October 7th, as well as FBI noting 60-plus percent of all religious hate crimes directed towards Jews, I'm concerned. Even prior to October 7th, I authored the first of its kind, the Commonwealth Municipal Resolution, to try to create framework about how to address antisemitism in the city. I've been concerned to see very little action taken in response to the points outlined there. Furthermore, I proactively reached out to our superintendent and our current school chair of the school committee for actions in our schools. The responses varied from complete silence to underwhelming. But I do thank the committee members who have made clear efforts to recognize this issue and participate in dialogue. We are living in a time where our current youth holds perhaps the highest-ever anti-Jewish sentiments in this country. Holocaust distortion denial is at its all-time high. Much like other crises of the coronavirus and school shootings, we are currently in a crisis in anti-Jewish hate. One only has to look at the news to see the attacks on Jewish individuals, Jewish businesses, Jewish organizations, and Jewish students every day. I have to decide if I'm going to wear this star inside or outside my shirt, depending on where I am. These messages only have served to make Jewish students feel less safe on campus, be barred from public spaces, and have had multiple states have to take legal action against universities to enforce safety for Jewish people. Our students who are here now grew up to be the college students of tomorrow. How do we correct what we see in our schools? Swastikas, anti-Jewish tropes, and Jewish students being targeted for being Jewish? And now, there's no excuse. Recent state legislation requires us to respond to this issue. It is now a directive of DESI. So each Hampton, which always claims to be a leader against hate, should be proactive in this manner. And yet, the flaccid response, the silence, the lack of transparency, and the dismissal of a clear and present crisis of Jewish hatred is worrisome, to say the least. Superintendent, you may be on your way out, but that doesn't absolve you of your responsibility to respond to inquiries and concerns from an elected official, a municipal partner, a parent, and a leader of the local Jewish community. To the Chair, the Mayor, and members, I thank those who have participated in dialogue. We must not yield to the acute and historical evidence before us and show solidarity and initiative to our Jewish community. There has never been a time in history where supporting or siding with the Jewish people has been wrong, and there has been every sign in history where ignoring the plight or failing to support the Jewish community has been a failure. Please act accordingly.
Thank you, Councilor Zerrett. Is there anyone else here tonight who'd like to share their thoughts?
Good evening, School Committee. My name is Ben Ewing. I'm at 69 Briggs Street. I'm the father of a fifth grader and a seventh grader, and I felt compelled to come here and speak tonight as a direct result of a discussion that occurred at the October 8th School Committee meeting regarding the district's MCAS scores. I am not here to advocate for or against question two. I respect the thoughts of the first speaker. But I do have a couple of perspectives that I want to offer to you all on this subject. First, I feel it is important to explicitly acknowledge the reality of our district's MCAS scores in the simplest possible terms. They are bad. East Hampton Public Schools underperforms nearly all neighboring districts, as well as the state, on average, in nearly every subject, in nearly every grade. I have gone through the data published by the state. I would be happy to share some bar graphs illustrating this with any members of the committee who are so interested. It's rarely available and easy to analyze. I don't personally feel that standardized tests are the be-all and end-all of education, but I certainly feel that they provide one type of objective information. In my view, no rational person is going to look at these scores and draw the conclusion that our schools are performing well academically on average. In my opinion, the results that we've seen here are not acceptable. They shouldn't be acceptable. The second point I'd like to raise is one of frustration with the manner in which, in my view, school officials downplayed and dismissed this poor performance at the last School Committee meeting. I heard statements about how we, as a community, have decided not to place value on MCAS, how we, as a town, are somehow on the cutting edge as it relates to MCAS. And I'd like to be clear that these types of statements are not reflective of my own views as a member of the community. I don't think anyone who looks at our scores are going to think that we're on the cutting edge of anything. I personally do think there is some value in the MCAS. I think that it provides an objective means of comparing school systems, and it allows us, as a community, to hold our schools accountable and our school leaders accountable when we're falling behind. I heard the Mayor ask several times at the last meeting, what measures or metrics would be used to evaluate school performance if the MCAS were not used, and there was no forthcoming answer. It is the only metric available. Right or wrong, that's what we have. I acknowledge that a variety of plans and adjustments were noted for addressing the gaps in math, ELA, and science, and I appreciate that, and I truly hope that those are successful. I did not, however, hear any specific measurable goals regarding the subject areas that we want to improve, and by how much. Absent any goals, it seems challenging to assess whether we're meeting them. So here are my closing thoughts on this subject and what I personally would like to see going forward. I'd like to see the school administration set specific, measurable, and achievable goals for MCAS improvement in each grade level, and evaluate on a periodic basis whether we're meeting those goals. It feels pretty basic. I'd also like to ask that the School Committee and the Superintendent Search Committee take into a consideration our school's performance as they work through the superintendent hiring process. I'm particularly interested in what approaches superintendent candidates will propose taking to improve our scores, improve our overall academic performance, as well as how they would approach holding school leadership accountable for this performance. And finally, I'd like to thank you all for your time and for the countless hours you all volunteer on behalf of our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Anyone else care to join remotely by raising your virtual hand? Don't think so. Okay, we are going to close public comment for this evening, move on to the Superintendent update. Superintendent Penanda?
So first, the October 1st enrollment. As you know, that's really important for funding mechanism for the next budget. So we have our 24, 25 numbers. I think you all have them. To just review on that, the total number of students, this is for Mountain View School for this year, as of 10-1, is 978 students. The number of students in, they've gone to, we have, you know, Smith-Voc that we send students to, and we have 49 students going to Smith-Voc and 27 to C-Tech. Total for the high school is 377 students. So the Smith-Voc students never, you know, attend EHS, but the C-Tech go half-day, C-Tech and then half-day GHS. So the total East Hampton School enrollment is 1,331 students. Total including early childhood only is 1,355, and total including Smith vocational only, 1,380. So total including early childhood and Smith-Voc is 1,404. But the total that we have, which is the number that we will get our funding on, is 1,331. So that is 24, 25. Now you compare it to 23, 24. So the total number of students, as you know, right now, Mountain View is 978. Mountain View was 1,024 in 23, 24. The high school at 373 in 23, 24, and again, we're at 377. So more student difference on that. Total number last year was 1,349. Again, this year, 1,331. So down a bit. Smith vocational students, as I said, last year was 49, this year at 44, and C-Tech last year was 42, and we're down to 27. And that just could mean that we have less students, but it, you know, could also mean that less students wanted to go into the vocational trade. So therefore, they're staying GHS. Did give you the 22, 23 figures. So there was 1,011 students totally. So we are, you know, this is at Mountain View. And at Eastham High School, we're 367, and now we're at 377. So again, more students are EHS. And our numbers at Smith-Voc, of course, was 44 then, 49 now, and 37 at C-Tech and 27 now. So the number that, you know, our budget, of course, there's other parts that affect the budget, but your number of students and the amount of money you get per student is going to be based on the number 1,331.
Thank you, Superintendent. When looking at the numbers and the 1,331 number, I always get this wrong. So that number will be used for next fiscal year?
Yes.
And this year, we have?
1,349.
How much?
This year, well, this year, we, this, last year we were at 1,349, and this year, we're at 1,31. So we have less students.
So we had, and I just want to get this on the record, we talked about it some time ago. Our numbers, the decrease in numbers after COVID were significant, and it would be easy to mistake the funding we get from the state as having a severe cut, more than the first year we had fewer students after COVID, were based on a number that was around, I think, like 1,900. So just as far as budgeting and going forward, the realization is, we were very fortunate that minimum aid went to 104. Because we are still a minimum aid district, and a minimum aid district on 1,331 really affects the projections for our budget. I'm not, it's not a rail littering crap, you know, it's not cutting, it's not anything other than going forward, we really need to be cognizant that the funding our budget is more and more reliant on the legislature stepping up and adding to minimum aid, which they don't have an obligation to do. So, you know, that was an extra $60 per kid?
Yes.
Yeah. And we use it. We put it right back, I mean, you know, my hat's off to the Superintendent and to the Chair and other school members on finance that really were, did a great job redeploying that money once we found it was available. My fear is in coming years, and I'm going to say it out loud, right now, is that we will always do that as a community? You know? But that extra money just gets smaller by number of kids, and us crossing our fingers that the legislature will add, will recognize there are too many minimum aid districts. And there's a lot of legislation going on right now to address that. You know, I think it's like over 200. School districts are minimum aid and whatnot, but that, that's a big number and a big variable for this particular district.
Anybody else have, Superintendent Penanda, anything else or any comments on that first part discussing the enrollment? Ben, you have any?
Um.
Oh, she's not on the internet. Okay. Excellent, thank you. Okay, we're going to squeeze you in before we get to the proposed goals. Okay, so you don't have to stay all night. Sam, did you have thoughts about?
Yeah, I just had a question.
Thank you.
And I don't know, it's hard to, it's hard to know, like what, when you're looking at a lot of numbers, it's hard to know, like, what numbers are worth paying attention to and what numbers are just kind of extra. But I just noticed that in our preschool, you know, we started out with 20, I think it was, if we look back at 22 to 23, we had 27 students, and 23 to 24, we have 48 students, and in 24 to 25, we're back to 24. And I was just wondering, since that's typically, you know, students who are qualifying for preschool typically stay for three years or two or three years, I was just wondering if we, if there's a reason for that that you're aware of.
And did we restructure the program?
For the Chair? So one of the things is that we, we don't have a lot of the typical students in some of the classes right now, so that's one of the--
So we don't have the peer mentor?
The peer mentors, right. As many peer mentors in some of the classes right now. So normally, you would have 15 students, right? And eight would be age-appropriate, and seven would be your students with special needs.
Yeah.
The number of students in a few of those classes are lower this year--
Yeah.
--for typical kids.
Is that because we've made the choice to do it that way, or is that because there's just not interest in the program?
Um, I think, you know, I think there was interest in the program, but I know from conversation with the principal for the preschool and K1, 2, that there was not as much interest.
Yeah.
They're limited hours, they're abbreviated hours.
Yeah.
They're half-day hours, and so we have half-day programs. Parents are looking for longer hours for their, for their children.
And that doesn't count in our, in what we get for funding, right?
No.
Because it doesn't include--
No, because preschool's not mandatory.
Or Smith-Voc. Okay.
Well, kindergarten isn't technically mandatory, but that's still factored in, isn't it?
But kindergarten is included in this, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions about the enrollment? I want to bookmark this for the public. This is another conversation we're going to be picking up again in January and February. Everything old is going to be new again after the first of the year, because there are going to be a lot of things that we, we have some concerns about, but we certainly want to integrate the new superintendent into those conversations during our transition period. We are going to move to our update from our student representative from East Hampton High School.
Hello, everyone. My name is Asta. I'm the East Hampton High School Student Council President. And in student council, our main purpose is just to foster a good community in the school. And a few things we've been doing for the last couple of weeks to do that is, we've been working on homecoming, our first 5K and pep rally. For homecoming, as I mentioned in the last meeting I attended, we had these VIP tickets, and our concept for that turned out really good. A lot of people enjoyed the mock tail ball that came with it and the add-ons. For our pep rally, the ninth and 10th grade showed a lot of spirit and energy during it, and then as student council president and members with it, we want to foster that energy for the, throughout the years they're there, and to set a good precedent for future classes. And then for our first 5K, we held for everyone, was fun for everyone who volunteered and participated. We had about eight runners, and all the money raised went to the ninth grade classes. And we are planning to host it again for next year with hopefully more runners. Some upcoming events we are planning is the Tiny Tots Halloween Party. We will be assisting the preschool teacher, Ms. Spencer, with planning, setting up, and running activities to give the kids a fun start to their Halloween. Next is our Kids Night Out on November 8th. The event gives parents an opportunity for a night out with affordable childcare. The kids who attend our previous Kids Night Out really enjoyed them, and Kids Night Out also helps these children feel more connected to the community, and hopefully, they'll remember the student council event when they attend high school and are more likely to participate in school activities. Lastly, for November, we are planning a food drive presented as Feather Wars, where students can bring in canned items, and depending on the amount, receive a certain amount of feathers and place them on a teacher's photos. At the end of the food drive, the teacher with the most feathers on their picture will have to wear this turkey suit. And with this fundraiser, we hope to bring the school community together in a fun way and also giving back and helping the people in need. Thank you.
Where's the food going, Asta, from the drive?
I think it's going to the local--
Community Center?
Yeah.
Great. That's awesome. We should point out, too, the low attendance was partly because they had to reschedule, right, for weather?
Yes.
Yes.
So we rescheduled to Sunday, and most of our participants were ninth graders, because more ninth graders were more interested in it. But I think with the outcome of this one, we might have more people participate next year.
Great. Excellent work. Awesome. I don't deny this district has challenges, but it is really refreshing every meeting to hear about the incredible students and the amazing educators that we have. It's a nice palate cleanser and lifts us up to keep doing the important work. Thank you, Asta.
Okay. Thank you.
Have a good night. Shall we move to the Superintendent proposed goals?
Sure.
Yes, I just wanted to add that I did spend a period today in the band class at the high school, and they were preparing for their volunteer work at the Veterans.
That's awesome.
It was a Veterans event, I guess, on November 11th. So it was great to see them working for 84 minutes, actually playing a musical instrument for that whole period of time.
Indeed.
It was really, or drums and cymbals. Yeah, it was really--
Apparently also an instrument.
Yes.
Also an instrument, right.
That's amazing.
Yeah, they're great.
So I wanted to say that.
And we will try to make an effort to publicize it a little better, because their concerts are outstanding. They will be performing for Veterans Day, but there will also be a concert in December, just free to the public, and just, they are incredibly talented. We support our middle school performers as well, but it is incredible to see the progress they can make from fifth and sixth grade up to the high school. It's a pleasure to watch.
It's really something. So these are the proposed Superintendent's goals. Did not include MCAS scores in those, because I will be departing before the MCAS scores come to the district, so it didn't make sense to add the MCAS scores in there.
So we remind the public that your transition period, you'll still be with us from January through June, but that will be a transition period--
Yes.
--between your superintendship and the oncoming superintending.
And I just want to say, we're like so lucky to have such a long period.
Yes, we are.
Most districts don't have a chance to have any kind of overlap or transition.
Transition, yes.
So I appreciate you being able to do that.
Of course, I look forward to that. So the, how the evaluations work, I gave a circle to show, is that first, you do a self-assessment, and then you analyze your goals, then you implement the plan, and sometimes there's a mid-cycle review, but there wouldn't be a mid-cycle review because ending on June 30th.
Yeah.
And then the summary of evaluation. So the first goal, you have a student learning goal, you have three goals, student learning goal. This one is throughout the 24, 25 school year, consistently monitor and assess student progress. To ensure all instructional staff implement effective and rigorous instruction with measurable outcomes. That doesn't directly address, you know, what are we doing with MCAS? We do use other assessments, too. Everybody in one through eighth grade and also ninth and 10th use staff assessment. That's done three times a year. It's done in the fall, it's done in the winter, and it's done again in the spring. And you're looking, you can compare yourself to yourself, to your district, or you can compare yourself to the state, and it's most effective if you compare yourself to both of those. And also, we also do curriculum benchmarks, and there's also every, like, the reading program has assessment. So all along the way, we're doing assessment, and with ST Math, it's constant assessment of where kids' goals are. So we'll be, you know, in the schools with the principals, monitoring and assessing student progress. progress. Uh, the benchmark is really through, you know, observations and feedback, setting high expectation, engaging all students and accommodating diverse learning and levels of readiness to monitor and support principals and instructional staff to use formal and informal assessments to measure student learning, student growth, and any necessary adjustments to improve student learning. The evidence is the walkthroughs, observations, uh, the district ILT meetings, the middle school, uh, melt, we call them melt agendas and meetings, start data, student grades, ST math data and literacy data. Also evidence on increased focus on writing in grades three to 12, uh, when we did the MCAS presentation. It was evident that, uh, we need to improve writing from, you know, third grade all the way up to grade 12. So there is a focus on writing, all the teachers' goals that they're submitting to their administrators have to have a writing goal in there so that we're able to assess our progress on writing. And then also improvement of math skills for grades three to eight. You also do a distant district improvement goal, usually two district improvement goals. So my, uh, first goal was by March 2025, develop a budget with the Director of Business Services that allocates and manages expenditures consistent with the district school level goals and available resources. So that's the budget. Actually start doing that sometime in January, but that's when we begin to work with, uh, the mayor's letter and also start to get our budget, even though it's not approved till June, most of that is all put together, uh, by sometime in March. And in order to do that, we have to communicate, you know, rationale to our own staff, to community members. Uh, there might be community members that are looking for certain programs like world language, for example, in the middle school, municipal stakeholders and the school committee. Um, also obviously in the mayor. I provide regular updates on the budget throughout the 24 school year to the school committee and identify alternative funding resources as needed, which might be grants that are available. And the evidence, of course, will be the school budget and the agenda of the budget meetings. The second district improvement goal is by June 30, 2025, provide effective and timely transition support to the new superintendent. So that will re-involve review of district doc-documents, review of district policies, review of district staff and roles, review of district educational assessments, curriculum initiatives and the budget. And, uh, the evidence will be, you know, self-report of the new superintendent, if they feel like they've been transitioned effectively, uh, into the role and then documentation of meeting dates and times with the new superintendent. And then the last goal you have is your professional practice goal. And, uh, this is a, a real, a personal one for me, uh, to work with parents, school and district leaders to develop a new life skills program at EHS for opening in August 2025.
So exciting.
This is so exciting.
It's very exciting. Uh, we had our first meeting, uh, with the parents that were, that have, uh, children that would be in the life skills program.
Can you just explain briefly? I don't know if many people at home might know what that is.
So that's a special needs program. And the, uh, focus of the work, uh, for the children in that program is that, uh, they are able to learn life skills so that, um, as an adult, they can have independent learning. So it's basic academic skills in the elementary school to be able to read, to write, to speak. Um, it involves OTPT, mobility, but when you get in the middle school, but when you get to the high school, uh, as the conversation with the parents, um, made very clear, is that they want their child to use a checkbook, they need to know how to, um, grocery shop, they need to know how to get transportation from one place to another, um, they need how to cook. It's all those skills that anybody would need to know in order to be independent as much as possible. It also involves getting a job, providing job coaching for them so they can have independent lives, also working in the community. It might be a volunteer job, it might be a paid job, but part of the high school curriculum has to be to teach those skills so that they can be independent as an adult. Uh, so we, um, already have a, we're starting off, we met with the parents, we wrote down all their goals and what they wanted for their children. And, um, they were all very similar and it was a wonderful meeting. And now we have, you know, our goals that we're gonna try to find how we're gonna meet these needs. So we are, um, taking a full day with the parents and we're, we're starting with three school districts and we, we got permission to go into the life skills programs in three districts and see what they do. And we'll come around, uh, the end to, we saw that we liked, that we wanna copy and then some of the things that we didn't like, we, we won't copy. So we're starting the tour with parents and that's gonna be in two weeks.
May I ask which districts you're visiting?
The first one, let me try and tell you right now. I wanna, I, I know they're local districts, let me see what the first one is, I can tell you right now.
Just curious.
Uh, let's see. I wanna say, I wanted to say our first one was in Palm, let me see where our first one is. Um, school districts. Let's see, we just got them set up this week. I'll just go to take any hold on. It is. Uh, let's see. South Hadley is the first one we're going to. So it is at nine o'clock on November 14th. So we're going to South Hadley right now and there's gonna be two other schools that are gonna be involved, but they were all right around here. We wanted to see the local ones first before we went out a little bit farther.
I just wanna say, I really appreciate, um, the work that you're putting into this. This is a huge need in our district, but also like more generally in this area. Um, I think it's, it's been hard for families to find life skills programs in high school that are appropriately rigorous and challenging and, but also individualized and are also going to incorporate the family's vision and the child's vision.
Yes.
For the life that they wanna have. And I'm just very excited to hear this. This is, um, this is great.
Yeah, we're excited too. And taking that so excited.
And if there's, if there's anything like I, this is, you know, I, 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 as a part of my day job, I helped with transition services in particular for kids with developmental disabilities. I'm happy to.
Good, 'cause we'll, we'll take you up on that.
Yeah, absolutely.
I have one more question, Lori, and I, I just expect it might be a question the public would ask. Are there, will there be any opportunities or no initially to have some sort of integrative access to this sort of programming? I've, I mean, we hear, you know, that's the constant like meme on social media talking about how kids can't change a tire, cook an egg or whatever. So is there any opportunity to offer some of that programming as like integrative programming for general?
Definitely, uh, the, the parents were very clear that they still wanted their students to be integrated in a lot of areas. Um, if there is a, you know, depending upon what they, the class is, like the checkbook class, they have.
I, I, I don't know that we're gonna have a checkbook class to be, we'll see. Personal finance?
Personal finance.
There we go.
But that's basically.
I use a checkbook, but I think I'm the last one, you know?
I, you, I do too.
All right.
So personal finance, um, also they wanted art music, they wanted integration to visit out of the school also.
So maybe, maybe, maybe you're one we can't, we don't have, but I think I would love to see over time, we offer some, you know.
This is the purpose of these programs.
Exactly, right.
These are meant to be, like, the school is a, the, the, um, students are a part of the community of the school.
That's right.
And what they're bringing to the school and what they're kinda highlighting as needs for young adults, you know, transitioning to adulthood are needs that all young adults and teenagers have.
Right, that's right.
And so I, that's why I think this is so cool, 'cause usually, you know, when I hear about these programs being developed, it's very much like, okay, we've got these four kids, we have to do something with them. Um, and, and here's an unused classroom and, uh, we've hired somebody for it, now we're gonna do life skills. And I really love that this began with like a visioning process with the families, with the special ed director. You guys are looking at different, um, different, uh, districts and kind of seeing what works and what doesn't work. Like, that's all kind of, um, that's really gonna enhance our, all of our students' experiences, not just our students with, with developmental disabilities.
Yes.
And I think that's super cool.
Yeah.
And it's what, it's what, you know, special education should be, honestly.
That's right. And, and we also, uh, talked about the parents' vision for this year about the children being transported over. Uh, so for example, um, Ms. Mango runs an after-school club on cooking.
She does.
And so.
She's got a good name for that.
She really does. And, and she sends emails when people are looking for cookies for the day, whatever.
Yeah.
So the idea is that the parents have definitely said, I want my child to get transported over there. And thanks to the mail-in, as she's a van, we will be transporting those kids over to the high school for experiences this year.
Awesome.
So the parents were very exact that they wanted the transition to start now.
Great, good.
And, uh, not a full-time program, 'cause we just haven't had it ready, what they're looking for. And they were very happy that, you know, they're giving us ideas of what they want for the transition and we're working on making sure that happens too.
Excellent.
This is great, very excited about this.
I think it's gonna, I, I think it could be a, uh, program that other districts would wanna transition their kids here.
Yeah, that's what I'm. I want this to be we the people level. I want this to be a benchmark.
Yeah, yeah. I want us to be known for this.
Yes.
Absolutely.
So we're, we're excited for that.
Great.
Uh, so, um, what is the benchmark? Connecting families to the resources and services within the school and the community, schedule of meetings with parents, apparent input and other program observations. And this is really important. And we talked about the job description with the parents of the hiring of special education teacher for this program. And so we started to write down what were the, what did the parents want for their child for this program. It was very clear to us, they just don't want anybody. They want somebody that has the passion to do this type of unique program. So, and they, and we're gonna include them in the interview community because they, they know what they want for their child. This is a special program and so we're gonna look for a special person.
And maybe we can, if they have that, maybe it's, there's an opportunity that we can get them cert, you know, if they require a special ed certificate, like.
Yes.
Maybe we can do something for the person with the right potential and the right emotional commitment, you know, bridge that gap.
And we have selected the classroom already at, at the high school.
Check that out.
It actually is the one that has the washer, the dryer, the kitchen.
Excellent.
So you can be able to work out of that class.
Can my kids attend that class?
Anybody can attend.
Okay.
And the evidence, of course, is that we're gonna produce a written document also for the high school skills program. So parents will have a document, this is the program, this is what it provides, and it can be a living document because, you know, things will change as, uh, different parents' needs for their child are recognized. And so we will adapt the program to that.
I don't wanna spend too much more time on this, but that document, I really like that as evidence because like I'm, so I'm, my, I don't wanna share too much about him here, but like my child, you know, participates in some specialized programming in the elementary school. And one of the things that has been really hard for me as a parent is to hear like, your kid is in SOAR this year, your kid is in LEAP this year. I don't know what those classes are. I don't know what those words mean, like I've asked and sometimes other people are like, I don't know, that's just what we call them. Um, it would be really nice to have it like a document written down to say like, this is kind of the scope of this program. And, um, as a parent, that would be really meaningful to me. So I'm very excited that.
Don't forget that document.
The, the plan, yeah.
So the, the next two pages that I gave you really is just, is, uh, about the description of the student learning goals. So you have focus indicators and you also have goals. So the focus indicators that, that are connected to the goals, uh, so the first one about the, um, assessing the student, student progress is, um, the focus indicator on evaluation in data-informed decision-making. The second professional practice goal regarding the life skills program is commitment to high standards and continuous learning. And then the budget one is fiscal systems. And the one about effective and timely transition support to the new superintendent would be about sharing responsibility.
Mm-hmm.
And then the next page, um, basically just highlights, you used to have to do all those goals and then that kind of thing impossible.
Yeah.
So you have to now, you get to pick, yes, you have to pick five. And then explains for you on the next page, um, it's yellowed in the box about the evaluation, like what is that? What is the data-informed decision-making? And on the next page, what is fiscal systems about? And the next one is sharing responsibility, just so you know what those are. And then, uh, professional culture, the areas about commitment to high standards and continuous learning. And it's all yellowed out, uh, for you. And, uh, that would, uh, be done sometime in June, sometime before June 30th.
Right. Excellent, thank you very much. Anything else you wanna add under the superintendent update? Any questions? Cruisin' right along. Um, Nick Bernier, along with Megan Harvey, apparently her name's Harvey, have the night off tonight. We do not have a finance update or personal update. We just met two weeks ago. Those are typically monthly reports. So we are gonna move on to the school committee discussion. As I mentioned, right around public speak, I wanna give everyone an opportunity, um, the election is fast approaching, I believe early voting has started or is imminently starting in Massachusetts. So, um, the question two is the one that has been posed to us by many community stakeholders, including one who is here with us tonight. Um, members two weeks ago got an opportunity to respond to that. We also offered an explanation why I, as chair, made a decision not to introduce a resolution, but that I wanted to give members an opportunity to voice, um, any support or opposition or nuanced thoughts they had about it. Ben, do you have anything you'd like to share?
Are we talking about?
Question two, yes. So this is a question on a yes vote. Would remove the 10th grade MCAS test as a requirement for graduating from a high school in Massachusetts?
I, I am in support of that, uh, question. I think we are along fast using MCAS in a way that, um, really reflects what students are actually living through. I don't know that the test shows us, other than like, uh, ancient ideas about what, um, test scores are good for. I just don't feel like, um, there's much left to study. I, I, um, I, as a, as a community college professor, I've seen like English students coming to my composition courses and they can't write, they can't really read. And I often, I attribute this to MCAS training over the years and I, I think that, um, it's time to try something new. We've been at this for a while and, uh, I wanna see what we can do without that pressure of MCAS. Um, I'm also concerned seeing like the way curriculum is constructed around a concern for MCAS. Um, I don't think that is very beneficial to the needs of current-day students. So I'm, I'm all in, let's, let's move on. I think we tried it and I think there are other ways we can discover to, uh, help support students.
Thank you, Ben. So that'll be a yes.
Yeah.
Um, Ly- ooh, Linda, and Mayor, I don't know that, you were remote last time and I think I might've forgotten because if it's on a computer, so if you wanted to say anything as well. Linda, do you have any thoughts to share?
I certainly do. I have had a standardized test business since, I've been involved in a standardized test, um, since, like, 2000. I have had 26 years' experience with standardized testing, ACT, SAT, and MCAS. I think standardized testing in itself is a flawed system. I think that if we didn't, if I could not have been a test tutor and showing students how to, in effect, beat that test, if it was an accurate representation of a child's ability. So therefore I vary strongly against, um, I am going to be voting yes on question two. I have many personal experiences dealing with children who have not been able to pass the MCAS test despite them going to school, despite them attending every single class, doing what their teachers have asked, uh, receiving grades that were reflective and still not able to pass this test. Do I think that we need some standards? Of course I do. I just think that this is the wrong solution and that's why I'm going to be voting yes.
Thank you, Linda. Mayor, do you have thoughts?
Yeah, um, I came out, I endorsed, uh, question two, um, in the positive. the positive. I am a certified superintendent and special ed director. And we're in schools, like I won't speak for the age of our superintendent right now, but we're in schools when MCAS got rolled out. And before that, the big change from ed reform where we went from Mexican.
Because '93 there?
'93, maximum feasible benefit to free and appropriate federal. That was supposed to smooth the way for one standardized test. And in many districts, just didn't see it work out that way. I think that it is important, it continues, it's one piece of data, but it's one of many. I also find that standardized tests as a piece of assessment data are important, but there are just so many other ways that we really need to be looking at it, especially when we know standardized tests, over and over again, have inherent baked-in bias, as well as the alignment of standardized tests to teacher education programs and professional development has never really happened in Massachusetts. And I would advocate strongly against that happening, but you've got teachers coming into the schools, administrators coming into the schools after an admin, and their orientation to educate a whole person is dramatically skewed by one arbitrarily chosen and created assessment. We should have a portfolio of benchmarks for students so they, too, can understand and know their own strengths, but also their weaknesses and make some choices about which way to go forward. We expect the same of our teachers. You know, when I was hiring teachers, they would come in with portfolios, and they were fantastic. I think they're still a thing, yes. And our students should have that in the same way. The last is when you look at workforce training programs and also just general interviews in the, you know, untethered labor market. There is a huge shift from resumes and degrees and those type of qualification to skill-based. And it's not, one is, you know, it's not dumbing down, but what it is, is what skills do you really need to apply to this position? And what an employer is looking at? That is not captured in standardized testing. And I appreciate our governor and Lieutenant's governor's position on this. And it is an indicator, but we know, boots on the ground and in our school, it is not a picture of our student body, and it's not a picture of what our teaching staff and admin staff can do. It really waters it down.
Anyone else that was?
I have an update.
I was gonna ask.
Y'all wanna fight to see who goes first?
I have papers too. You go.
Go ahead.
I just have an update. So last week, good God, two weeks ago, when we talked about this last, my, so my biggest, I've always been in favor of removing the MCAS as a graduation requirement. My biggest concern has always been the fact that there are certain school districts, and we saw this during the pandemic, where when the MCAS graduation requirement was suspended, they were graduating students without providing them with transition supports, which is, to be clear, against the law. You're supposed to be able to offer transition services to students who have not yet accessed a free and appropriate public education, despite meeting the district graduation requirements. I don't think this is a problem in East Hampton, but it has been a problem in other districts. And this is the thing that really worried me about this, about this valid initiative. I asked, I talked with folks from the MTA about it. I talked with folks from, I talked with Dan Carey about it. I talked with folks from the state agencies. And everybody's response was, oh, I haven't thought about that. That's interesting. And until last week, I had not gotten a response about this. But I spoke with a colleague of mine who is also an employee of the MTA, and she reported to me that this has been a conversation at the MTA, and there are some, there is discussion about legislation that will be introduced as a fix after this is passed, if this is passed, to address that particular issue. So I'm glad to hear that it's gotten some, that particular issue has gotten some steam. I'm still worried about it. I'm still looking forward to passing our policy that would just clarify our own graduation requirements, that if students are in need of transition services, that they can access those transition services, even if they've met our district graduation requirements. So that is my update, which is good, which is to say, when you have a problem with something, it's worth like talking about it and kind of expressing your perspective and your opinion because people will listen, which is great. I feel like so much in this world is like, you're either on this side or this side, and that's who you are, and there's no changing, there's no in-between. That's not how policy works in the real world. So it's been actually really cool to get to participate in that and to see that actually happen, hopefully.
Thank you, Sam. Eric?
I'll be brief. I'm just adding that I am in schools, and I'm seeing that most districts are moving to a more critical thinking, problem-solving, collaborative work, where kids are learning how to work with each other, work out problems. That's the future that we're heading into, we're heading into the future.
Knock on wood.
They're solving problems outside of the box and not just in this box where we say, read this passage, answer these questions. And then also just the negative sides of MCAS on teachers. I mean, it gets teachers stressed out, and it's a bit of a chess game where the pieces are actually smoking, they're floating, and you're not really sure because teachers will be told, listen, fractions are low, we did poorly on fractions. And then teachers crank out fractions, and then that year they go, there was only one fraction question? So it's like you're chasing these moving pieces. And it kind of sometimes pits teachers against each other because, you know, sometimes teachers will get praised. I've been a teacher who's been praised by my MCAS scores when I know for a fact it was the kids in front of me who produced those scores, and some colleagues that I've had who just, I know the kids that were in front of them. I know those kids struggled with their test. And so it's one feeling to say, oh, this teacher did a great job. But it's like, no, they're just, we had different kids and we knew their needs. So I think when you put all this emphasis on this test, it does more negative than it does good. And I think that this is a great movement that we're moving towards. So just wanted to put that out there.
Great. I want to add one point for those who might be waffling on this issue. I've also heard increased chatter from the no side. Want to highlight that this doesn't, for those who are concerned about how we would assess teachers and students, this does not remove MCAS testing from Massachusetts classrooms. Also want to highlight what this would do. It would divorce the result of the 10th grade MCAS as an up or down yes or no requirement for a student to graduate. And so to just frost that cake for the public, Massachusetts has the highest learning standards for public education, grade K through 12, in the country. They also have the best outcomes by student in the country. So we already have incredibly rigorous learning standards. When I was a teacher in the classroom, there was no way, on God's green earth, I was gonna hit all of the social studies standards for grades five through eight. They are incredibly precise and intricate, and there's a lot of them. So food for thought. This doesn't, you know, all this will do is lower the stakes of that one assessment test and maybe allow for kids to feel, you know, change the pressure and the focus in those first two years of high school.
Can I ask a question?
Of course, Ben.
If a district has low scores, the state will no longer step in on that.
Oh, no, that's not what we said. No, it would still, yeah, so the state would still be able to determine the success of a district. Our neighbor to the south can attest to that. There would still be stakes, but it would not fall, there would be stakes for a district. There would not be stakes for an individual student's ability to obtain a high school diploma.
Right, right, right. I was just thinking like the receivership.
Yep. No, that's still, that's still on the table. Baby steps. Okay. Anybody else have thoughts on that? All right, we're gonna move to a policy subcommittee update.
Thank you. We don't have one.
Okay.
Well done.
We do have a second, we do have a second reading of the school council's policy.
Okay. And everyone should have a copy of that. That was in the packet, and we discussed it and had a vote on the initial reading last time. Sam, would you like to just take a moment, maybe offer a motion to approve and maybe summarize, because a couple of us were not here last week when we touched on this?
Sure. So let me do, I'll do a motion to approve the second reading of the BDFA school council's policy.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Eric.
Excellent.
So for discussion, we're gonna start with Sam.
So this is a policy that basically just describes what the school council is in our district and what it does and what its purview is. So we wrote this based on feedback from the community, from the building administrators, from some of the staff, just people who have offered feedback over the last year. Essentially, this sets up the school council so that each of our schools, so Mountain View is one school, East Hampton High is another school, has a separate school council. The school council is convened by the principal. And then the school council will be the composition of, and the group of that council will also be determined by the principal. They will meet regularly. We said five to seven times per year. I think this got left, that got left out of this copy, but I do intend to add that in. So five to seven times per year. And their role is to adopt the, assist in adopting the educational goals for the school that are consistent with state and local policies. Identify the needs of the students attending the school and of their families. That's like, honestly, when I've done research on school councils, that's the thing that really stands out to me is like, the school council is the way that building administrators can find out like what the needs of the community are, and that's a really important role. They will also review the school building budget, and they will also participate in formulating the school improvement plan along with the principal. And then that's implemented after review and approval by the superintendent. And then we have an additional.
A question about that. So are we gonna not require that it be, excuse me, approved by the school committee?
I think, that's actually a good question. I think we, what do we?
We present, I present it to the school committee.
Yeah, you would be presenting it to the school committee. But it wouldn't be approved. And it's gonna be on a two-year cycle.
But we had previous to this, it was being approved by this, so we'll no longer need the school committee to interfere in the approval of this.
I think the thought was to make the process, to make it a quicker process from the time, because by the time the school, you convene the school council, the school improvement plan, you get your data from last year, you develop your school improvement plan, you bring it to the superintendent, you bring it to the school committee, it's already the end of December. So I think that might have come from trying to shorten that period of time. But we also, in the process, and we don't have, I don't have the school improvement plan policy here, but we did work on that as well. We had also lengthened the school improvement plan to two years rather than one year. So we could add, I mean, if.
No, I'm just commenting that that's one of the significant changes.
But, you know, I think we were just trying to cut down on kind of superfluous steps in the process so that we could actually do the school improvement plan.
Anybody have questions, comments?
And this is also a direct result of the same 1993 law that led to the MCAS, also led to school councils.
Big year.
Big year for education.
All right. So we have a motion on the floor. If there's no further questions, we'll take a vote. Okay. All those in favor of adopting the motion to approve the second reading of the policy BDFA school councils, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes? The finance subcommittee update, our finance chair is not here. Happy birthday, Megan. We have not met yet. Typically, finance is slow at the end of the year and then does 10 times the work of normal humans from January through April. So that will commence likely right after the start of the year. CES update, Sam, have you met CES?
We have not met. We're gonna be next meeting.
Since two weeks ago?
Since two weeks ago. We are next meeting at the day before Thanksgiving, so.
Excellent.
We'll see how that goes.
The superintendent search update. The superintendent search committee has been named. They have been informed. They will be meeting for the first time tomorrow evening, the 23rd, at 6:00 PM in the library. We are not involved in that process directly. Just to clarify for the public, their task will be to look through all of the applications that the district received and to select between four to six candidates or finalists to put forward to the school committee in November for us to interview, introduce to the public, and then make, hopefully, a job offer in the middle of December, I believe by December 18th was roughly the working date that we had. So that work begins in earnest tomorrow night. We want to extend our thanks and gratitude once again to those volunteers. Then at the MASCE resolutions, Sam.
So I know that you love resolutions, Laura.
I love resolutions. I resolve to love resolutions.
Laura and I are going to the MASCE, the Mass Association of School Committees Conference in a couple of weeks. And one of the things that happens at this conference is that there is a resolutions committee from MASCE, and they present resolutions that the body as a whole participates in voting for or against. There's 10 resolutions up for discussion, and I am looking for a direction from this committee in terms of what do you want us to do? Now, some committees, from what I learned last year, some school committees are like very, very prescriptive, and they say like, vote, you know, they all agree, we're gonna vote this way or that way on each of these. And if there's any changes to the resolutions, they can't vote on them anymore. I did find last year that there were some resolutions that were discussed in the group, and then there were some changes made, and then people would vote for or against them. And so some school committees allowed that, some school committees didn't. Or you could just, you know, it's also fine to just say, you're leaving that to me and Laura, or it's fine to look at these and say, these are the ones that we care the most about, and that are the most important to our district, and this is how we'd like to vote. So what is your thought about the best way to proceed here, Laura?
Yeah, so there are, I think there's a total of 10 resolutions on the table.
There's 10 resolutions, and then there's the, there's the expiring resolutions.
Which?
Which, it's all good.
Yeah. So what I would suggest is the following. If anybody, we can open a discussion on those first 10 resolutions. I would, if there's any one in particular that the committee, kind of the majority of the committee wants to direct us to vote one way or another, we can do that. At the very least, we need the freedom, similar to like when we were negotiating with a union, for example, we need the freedom to be able to vote as things unfold at this.
Can I, can I just highlight a couple that I think, because I went through them all last.
Well, the first one I think we should talk about.
I think the first one we should talk about, that's a development of an alternative to the high-stakes MCAS test, which falls in line very well with what we were just talking about. I am curious about Resolution 5, aligning taxing authority with the required local contribution, fully adjusting Chapter 78 for inflation, that's Resolution 7, equitable funding for non-regional school districts with high transportation costs, and.
Heyo!
And the expansion in capacity of Chapter 74 vocational programs, I think would be good.
None of those I think are controversial.
No, they're not controversial.
But I think they're particularly important to us.
And then there's, you know, the other ones, obviously, you know, it's, I'm not saying they're not important, I just don't think that they're as.
Some are more important.
And these resolutions, by the way, just so the public knows, and this is why Laura and I don't love resolutions, is that they're just directing the legislature to do various things. It doesn't mean the legislature is going to do them.
It's a declaration of one's feelings.
It's a declaration of one's feelings. And we get to do it once a year at MASCE. And it's good as a body and as, you know, to say like, this is what school committees, like most school committees in Massachusetts, these are our values, these are the things that are important to us, these are the things that we have in common, or these are the things that are not our values or that are not important to us. And there were some good discussions to come out of it last time. But I don't, I want to make it very clear that we're not gonna be like fixing Chapter 70.
Right.
But not to belittle what you're doing, it starts with, everything starts with the conversation.
Right.
The more it's conversed, it becomes more head and it goes, yeah.
I think we just don't want, I don't want anyone on the committee to feel nervous that like, if we don't vote the right way on one of these resolute, it's literally just a statement of values.
Discussion.
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
Does anybody have specific thoughts on any of these? Or if there isn't any of that, we would entertain a motion to just grant Sam and I permission to use our common sense while attending the conference.
A second.
I still move.
Still move. And a second is Eric. Thank you. Okay, all those in favor.
You don't want to spend an hour going through each of these, Eric?
No, that's me and you, in the cave of all hours.
That's how much we trust you both.
Yeah. This is the nerd curse.
You're so wise.
Yeah, see?
You guys are missing out on a great road trip, is all I'm saying.
We do need, we do need a vote on the motion on the table if there's no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Thank you so much for your vote of confidence.
Thank you.
There's also, we're also voting for a slate of leaders in the committee, and I just wanted to throw out there that Denise Hurst is up for president-elect, and she is from the Springfield School Committee.
Oh.
One of our neighbors, so.
What do we know about her? Well, I guess we'll get to know.
She's super cool.
All right.
I've met her a couple of times.
That's great.
She's super cool. Cool.[1675.26] She's super cool, cool.
All right, moving on to action items. Can I read these myself, Sue? Yeah, well, watch me, watch me. Ready, all right, here we go.
I don't know, can you?
Motion to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated October 3, 2024 in the amount of $189,880.73. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Sam. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions?
Abstain.
Thank you. Motion to approve the school payroll dated October 3, 2024 in the amount of $587,613.93. May I have a second?
That's $587,613.
What did I say, $587,613?
I guess that's, okay, sorry, second.
Am I okay? Did you get that number?
Yes.
Okay, as long as Sue
From, because it was written down? Right, thank you. The shade. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Sam. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions?
Abstain.
Thank you. Motion to approve the school committee regular session minutes of October 8, 2024 with the stipulation to withhold executive session minutes until matters are resolved, reviewed, and released by the chair. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Sam. All those in favor?
Yes.
Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. Motion to approve the East Hampton High School out-of-state field trip request to Germany April 15 through 23, 2026. I know, we're very excited. Can I have a copy of that?
Yes, why don't we do it with the people?
Oh, yes, go ahead, let's talk about it. I have to abstain because my child is going on this
Oh, yeah.
This sounds like a wonderful trip, April 15 to April 23, 2026.
So they're going to Glutentag Frankfurt and Heidelberg Lake Constance, where they'll see Black Forest and the Rhine Falls and the Kuku Klock demonstration. Then they go to Munich, and they're going to, oh, boy, see Ho-Kin-Schwa-Wango excursion, that's Castle Visit. They're also going to see Queen Mary's Bridge, it's a photo stop, and the Bratwurst Dinner, they're going to have a Bratwurst Dinner that night, Bavarian Bratwurst Dinner. The next day, they're going to Munich landmarks, they're going to tour a, you know, Palace Gardens, a Duchess Museum, BMW headquarters, the Olympic site of 1972, Marion Plots, and they're going to Dacha, concentration camp and memorial visit. Then they're going to Berlin, I train, and they're going to walk the city, seeing Alexander Platz, Bebelplatz, Nicolei Quater, and Museum Island. Then the other Berlin landmarks on day seven, Berlin Garden sightseeing tour, Checkpoint Charlie, Potsdam of Platz, the Berlin Wall, Brandenburg Gate, Topography of Terror visit, and Alexander Platz treasure hunt. And on the last day, they're going to Potsdam, they're going to go to the Jewish museum visit, and an optional
They always do the optional stuff, too.
Yeah, optional excursion is Nusspalé guided visit, Sans Souci, Palace Gardens, and the Russian colony. And then they return home after nine days.
Sounds amazing.
Sounds amazing.
This is for the High Schools World Language Club. Every year, the aforementioned fantastic Antonetta Mango, who also runs the cooking club and advises the yearbook, takes roughly 30 to 35 students to a different foreign country. They tend to bounce back and forth. One year will be South or Central America, the next year will be Europe, and it boop, 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 you're
That's super cool.
It is wonderful. They are actively fundraising right now for those who are interested, and they will be having, hosting their craft fair, which is a fundraiser for the World Language Club, excuse me, this Saturday, I believe, at the high school in the Cafe Commons. So it's a great opportunity, as Ms. Mango would say, for some early holiday shopping. They have a ton of local vendors and some fantastic live music, and Ms. Mango cooks their food.
I think they're selling their calendars until October 31st.
$10 for the raffle calendar, for every day you would have a chance to win a different local gift certificate. Thank you so much.
Where do you pick these up if you wanted to get those?
You can call me The bookcase in the valley.
I will fight you. We both have children
The valley is selling them.
Yeah, Julianne and my kid. So we'll talk, we'll talk about that. So there, there is that motion on the table, yes, we have that motion on the table, we have a second.
Do you, I seconded. Are you able to make the motion since your child is going, or do you have to abstain?
I think that's getting a little in the weeds.
Okay.
I don't even think I need to abstain, I just choose to do it to cover mine.
All right, I seconded by me then.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, and I will abstain. Motion passes, congratulations, kids. Motion to approve the July 9, 2024, wow, work session minutes, I'm assuming that was my fault. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Sam. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Motion to approve the August 27, 2024 regular session minutes with the stipulation to withhold executive session minutes until matters are resolved, reviewed, and released by the chair.
Second.
Thank you, Sam. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Motion passes. Motion to approve the September 3, 2024 executive session minutes with the stipulation to withhold until matters are resolved, reviewed, and released by the chair.
Second.
Thank you, Sam. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Motion passes. Our next meeting dates, November 12, we will have the regular session. December 17 will be the meeting, at least a portion of that meeting will, or the majority of that meeting will be the presentation and final interviews for our finalists. And if we are not prepared to take a vote that night, we have also scheduled a meeting for December 18. So between December 17 and December 18, the hope is that we have voted on and extended an offer to one of our finalist candidates who will begin their vetting process tomorrow night with our search committee. Anything else, or I would entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Ben. All those in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everybody.